Tonight's, let's try that again. Just a second. Okay, I got mine off too. Where's the echo coming from? Testing, testing. I think it's coming from the owl. I think it was you. What are you doing, Dave? All right, let me verify. Nope, I've got my mic off and I've got my speakers off, so I shouldn't be getting feedback. All right. Going to shut my system down real quick. Make certain it's not me. One moment. Did you say council member reports? Testing. Great. Okay, good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular study session meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. And I'm still going to count this as starting at 7:00 PM since we just had a little technical hiccup there. I'm going to go ahead and ask that Clerk Wykoff, please call the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present and establishing a forum are councilmembers Foulter, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is public moments. This is a side, this is a side set of time. Okay, let's try that again. This is a limited public forum for people to speak to the council during this council meeting. I'm going to go ahead and check to see if there's anybody who would like to speak to the council this evening before I read the rest of the script. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council? Okay, anybody see any ghosts in the room? Nope, okay. There being nobody, and again, if you called in to online remotely to provide public comment, we don't do that right now. And we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. All right. Next item on the agenda is council member reports. So I'm going to start down here on this end, council member Gamble, but I'm going to go down the row. Okay, council member Gamble, you're up.
Awesome. So last week was able to attend the awards ceremony up at the high school. So culmination for the Monroe Public School Foundation. They gave through the foundation to the Sky Valley Education Center, Monroe High School students going to whether it's trade schools and/or otherwise. Well, to be specific, $124,900, which is the most that has ever been given. I said I'd give an extra $100 to take it to 125, and it really, really bugged me. But yeah, just it was great to see the community and the amount of businesses that gave scholarships to kids coming out here. And then how many people come back to present them? Well, a lot of the families, there's a lot of memorial scholarships of students that have, you know, had a big impact on their lives, unfortunately they have passed, or whether it's, you know, former teachers or folks that were really involved that have set aside, you know, in their state planning, money to go to students from the, from their school. Had such a big impact. So it was a great night. I do it every year. This one was a little extra special because my kid was up there. So that was, that was a ton of fun. And then this week kicks off kind of all of the festivities for those that are around town. So Friday is the parade. If you haven't seen that, stuff that starts from Frylands that goes through for the graduating class. And then all of the graduating stuff that goes next week with the moving up assemblies. And then they do the walks at the elementary schools. It's just a cool tradition, a lot of cool tradition stuff that goes on. So you're seeing folks in black robes and hats and orange tassels running about town over the next weeks. That's what, that's what it is. So, and that's what I'll be doing. So there you go.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Good evening. I don't want to steal everybody's thunder, but we had the memorial wreath at Lake Thai. Quite a few of us were there. And then we had the memorial service at the cemetery. And most of us were there. Other than that, I'll leave more words to some of the other people who were there too.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Foulter.
Yes, I was there at the memorial wreath laying and the thing at the IOOF Cemetery also. Always fun to go up there because I have so much family up there. And it was a good time to honor our fallen. We also had the farmer's market on Wednesday, first one of the season, a very windy, cold start. But from here on out, Janelle has promised sunshine. So please come join us three to seven every Wednesday.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor. Also attended the Memorial Day events. Councilmember Hanford did a great job and let him speak a little bit more about that. And I really appreciate you doing that every year. Lovely event. Got to bring my 86-year-old mom to both of the, both of those events on Memorial Day. And that was really special for me because my dad is a Marine. Last week, I believe it was, I was asked to go to Kids Club at Take the Next Step and do a presentation on cross-country running as part of their Healthy Kids Month. And that was really, really fun. And it was mostly kids from Frank Wagner Elementary that participate in that program, K-5. And it was really fun because I've been trying to get out as work allows and do some emergency subbing at Frank Wagner, Frylands Elementary. And a lot of those kids I actually knew. So it was really, really fun. And that's been a wonderful thing too, because I, I really feel like it's, it's a good idea to be in the school, see what's going on, see what the teachers are facing, see what some of the issues with the students are, admin, all of that. And so I'm subbing again next week, and I'm going to try and do that until school is out. Other than that, went to the food bank ribbon cutting on Sunday with council member Hanford and Fisher and Jake. And that was really awesome. And I'll let them talk about that. And last but not least, the Monroe Historical Society also gives a scholarship every year. And we had Madison Smith as our recipient this year. And I'm really proud to contribute to students, graduating students in the district through the Historical Society. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
The name of the run is it the Ward Run?
Yes. Flags for our fallen.
Flags for, that was what I was looking for. Okay. Yes, since our last meeting, gosh, it feels like it's been forever. Did the VFW Flags for Our Fallen run with councilwoman Beaumont, and it was a blast. She showed me how slow I am.
That's so not true.
Yeah, right? So I'm not running with the council member anymore. Attended the PSRC General Assembly, and that was awesome. Just a great experience to learn more about that process and make some new connections with some of the people in that organization. And I would love, yeah, I'd love to catch up with a few of you guys and share some of what I learned. And then attended the Kiwanis ribbon cutting for the sensory boards, I want to say is the title of it, ribbon cutting at Lake Thai. They donated funds to provide three of those, three different parks. And that was really special. And then lastly, the food bank ribbon cutting, which was a really powerful day, Mayor. Awesome speech, as always. And it was great seeing Congresswoman Del Benny there. She, she had a great message to share as well, just powerful. And it really makes you appreciate the community that we're in, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher. Clap twice.
There we go. So I also went to the food bank ribbon cutting. It's crazy how awesome that place looks now. If you haven't had a chance to go in there, it's almost like a, like a Whole Foods setup. It looks so nice. And I think it's just so important for people to go in there to not just be handed a bag and be in a line. It kind of makes them feel more human. You can help them shop. You can look at recipes. And just that whole, that whole group that made that work is pretty incredible. And again, Mayor gave a great speech. Congresswoman Del Benny was great to have there. And then the four of us here, I guess, were all there. Unfortunately, I couldn't go to the wreath lane. I can tell you that my flags were all up in front of my house to honor our fallen soldiers during that time. But unfortunately, I couldn't, couldn't make it. And then coming up this week, I've got affordable housing meeting and left one meeting to Thursday. I feel like I did so much more than that in these last two weeks, but I just can't remember. Because having conversations with all my neighbors and everything that's going on. But, but that concludes it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it was, it was a great time with several of you doing the wreath lane at Lake Thai. That's a very special time. And I appreciate you, Mayor, starting that, for sure. And everyone's participation was there. Thank you. And then going up to the cemetery and all that, and that was very special to be with the others that were there. I'm glad to hear, Councilor Walker, that you attended the PSRC assembly. I wanted to attend that, but I couldn't make that work. So glad to hear that. The food bank ribbon cutting was extremely special to me. For those of you, I think we've talked about this before, but before I was on council, before I worked at Boeing, I was unemployed. We had foster kids in our home. And I lived out of that food bank for several months and mowed people's lawns and did whatever I could to survive until I got started at Boeing. So that food bank is very special to me. And then when I was on the Employees Community Fund of Boeing board, we were able to make a grant for, I think it was their truck, their delivery truck that picks up supplies. And so that was really special to be like a complete turnaround. And then when we were there Sunday, got to see the freezer section and everything that Employees Community Fund, which I'm still a part of, donated and was part of that construction project. So it was very special and very meaningful for me. So it was a great week until I got a very depressing email from this night about somebody leaving. So other than that, it was great.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to Administrator Night for the City Administrator Report Extended Agenda.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Looking forward to next week, which is the 11th. We will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. And we're going to be reviewing the rules and procedure for boards and commissions and committees with Jody Wykoff. For the regular business meeting, we will have a presentation by Tammy Dunn on the Sports Tourism in Snohomish County, a public hearing on the ordinance for downtown commercial code amendments, a hearing and first reading with Amy Wright. And then on the consent agenda, we will have the accounts payable, meeting minutes payroll, Monroe Arts Council change of scope request, a trail lease with WSDOT for the US2 trail, shared path adjacent to the fairgrounds. Under new business, we'll have first reading of ordinance updating the traffic impact fees, a resolution setting the public hearing date for the Mountain View Road Right-of-Way Vacation, council rules of procedure amendments, and then amendment number one to the interlocal with Snohomish County for Law Enforcement and social worker services. Under discussion items, we have a request for proposal for the option, excuse me, the options for request for proposals for solid waste. This is the council's kind of annual opportunity if you want to go in a different direction. And then the Monroe 2044 Draft Land Use Chapter with Kate Turtleow. And then the regular department reports, we do have an executive session for sale of property for the 18th of June. We had the Public Safety Committee meeting earlier in the evening. And the committee decided that they would go ahead and hold a special meeting on the 18th of June. So we will not have a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting that evening. Under the regular study session, we have a number of items to discuss. Draft Economic Development Chapter, the Transportation Chapter, the Downtown Parking Assessment, Animal Crossing signage, Speed Zone cameras, and cannabis, along with a potential levy measure. So lots of things to talk about on the meeting on the 18th. That's it for the extended agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
I think I said before, but I'm going to be out of the country on the, on the 18th.
18th of June?
Yep. Will not be able to attend.
Any, anybody else for notes for absences or? Okay, so June 25th? Okay. I was just repeating for the microphone. You're welcome. All right, anybody else? All right. Next item.
Great. So a couple of save the date items still on the calendar. So June 5th, which is tomorrow, we will have the comprehensive plan, CEPA draft environmental impact statement, and then the workshop. So I know that we have our boards and commission members. Any of them will be attending. Copies of this invitation were sent to residents of the city of Monroe. So I think we've done a good job of trying to get the word out about tomorrow's event. For June 8th, which is a Saturday, we had noted earlier that there will be a fundraiser for the Wagner Performing Arts Center called The Power of Art that will be put on by members of our community. So that's very exciting that the Wagner Performing Arts Center is getting some additional funding in order to continue to make the improvements to that facility. And then looking forward again way into the future, September 7th, we do have the Poverty 101 class. And then finally, council member Hanford alluded to the email that I had sent out announcing that Becky Hassert, our finance director, the anonymous person behind the screen, after seven years of service to the city of Monroe, and just cannot enumerate the number of things that she's done for this community and, and for the city. But her last day will be June 30th. So more to come about an opportunity to wish Becky all the best in her next endeavor. I still live here. We know. We are well aware. We're making a long list, Becky, of the things that you can help us out with in your new role as citizen.
All right. Any, any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Mayor's report, as has been noted by a couple of people, it's been a couple of weeks since we had our last council meeting. First, thank you, council member Hanford, for taking care of the Memorial Day wreath lane. I passed by Sunday night. It was great seeing it out there and everything, so thank you very much for doing that. Two, did the ribbon cutting on the sensory board of the communication board. That's a really cool thing. I really appreciate the Kiwanis for, for funding a great portion of that. And so I do encourage each of you to get out to Lake Thai to take a look at it. And we will be having two more at two of our other parks also, including Blueberry and also, I think, down at Sky River Park. So those will be coming here soon. Ribbon cutting at the food bank, it was great seeing so many council members there. Thank you all for coming. I thought Sam Worshing, who was the former president of the food bank, did a great job of, in his spoken words as well. And it was great seeing Del Benny there. I think that when she comes out and she's, she's doing more than a ribbon cutting just for a road or a street or something like that, she's here seeing part of the heart of our community and seeing how we support one another. And I think that that is just really, really important for us to make certain that she sees that part of our community as well. And to somebody's point, yeah, it was like walking into a mini Whole Foods now. I mean, it's, it's, it's very clean. It's very easy to walk around. It's, the food is now where people can go and choose what they want. I volunteered at the food bank for a couple of years, a few years ago. And I remember that you had specific things you were allowed to give people. And based on certain tags that they walked by with, and there were times where people would want that other thing and not the thing that you were, you were giving them. And that always kind of felt weird. It's like, no, you don't want corn. You'd rather have peas, you know, just that kind of thing. So to have people be able to walk around and choose what they want, I think is a better way to do things. So I think that's great. A couple of things that I have coming up. I will be at the Wagner Art Center this Saturday for that fundraiser. Somebody from the Indian consulate in Seattle will be there. I did not realize that people from our Indian community are using the Wagner Art Center, the, that hall there to do a lot of dance events and things like that. So I will be there wearing my suit on Saturday and just be there to express our thankfulness for them re, you know, for them using our resource here in Monroe and also for raising funds to help improve it. I just think that's great. And then I'll be attending Pride on Sunday this week. So I'm not certain what time that starts, but I'll be speaking sometime just after, just afternoon on Sunday. So we've got a lot of things going on this month, and that's just a couple of them. I think that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. Going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that item will come under discussion items, number seven. Actually, before I move off of that, I just remembered because I didn't write it down.
Becky? It's been a real pleasure working with you. And I am really bummed to, to have read your resignation. And I am really going to miss you. I'll have more words to say in a couple of weeks. But, and you and I have already spoken, but just on the record, there's a lot that this community has done because of your ability to help come up with funding and find ways through, through what would be financial challenges to make things happen. You, you were instrumental in everything from the Lake Thai synthetic turf fields to the municipal campus redo. Just if I sit here, I will, I'm sure I would come up with a half dozen to a dozen different things that are just big things that you've done. And that doesn't count the little things and little conversations you and I've had. You're going to be deeply missed. You're a, an extremely important, crucial, critical part of our community. And I'm going to miss you. So I'm going to stop now because otherwise I'm going to need Kleenex.
Okay. Okay. Discussion item 7.1, introduction for proposed code amendments, Chapter 22.22 MMC Downtown Commercial Zoning District. And Amy, great. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I am here to introduce some city-initiated code amendments. And the overall purpose of those code amendments is to add, add some civic uses within the promenade subzone. So just a reminder of where the promenade is. This is our downtown zone. And the promenade stretches Main Street there in red. And it's really the commercial businesses that face Main Street along that edge. So it doesn't include the ones on the second story or that face an alley or a different direction. So some of the code amendments that we're looking at are, the first is for membership organizations. And currently, membership organizations are permitted in the promenade, but only as an accessory use. They, that means they have to be incidental and subordinate to a primary or principal use. And so the idea here is possibly to move it to conditional. That membership organizations include, I have a definition later in my slides here, but just if you're thinking about it, it could be the chamber, the rotary, other types of membership organizations of VFW. And the next code amendments that we're looking at, everything in black on the screen is our current code. So as you notice in the right column there, the promenade and none of the government facilities that are allowed in other zones are allowed in the promenade currently. So we're, we're looking to add conditional uses for courts, government administration buildings, police stations, and post offices. And so really thinking about what this means, obviously, you know, we're building a new city hall and a court will go there. This doesn't mean that a court will now go downtown. It's just giving an option. The same government administration buildings, that could mean some offices downtown possibly. Police stations could be a social worker, an embedded social worker, or an officer in the downtown area. And then post offices could be a mail stop, a smaller privately-owned mail station somewhere in the downtown. Those bring in a lot of foot traffic.
Amy, before you move on, if you could, just as a reminder, can you just sort of define, define the vision and the purpose of the promenade? And then also what is sort of the definition of the zone?
Absolutely. And so the vision of the promenade is a walkable area. I don't have the definition up, but I will pull it up. The idea is that you're walking along, the businesses aren't shuttered. It's somewhere that you can walk into and bring in a lot of foot traffic, which then brings in more traffic to other businesses in the downtown area. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. As you may know, the city recently purchased some properties in the downtown area. One of them is in the promenade. That's the old US Bank Building. Staff has brainstormed some uses, potential uses for the building. There are no plans. Some of them that we talked about were maybe long-term uses would be a festival lot, public restrooms. I'm sure you've, you have all talked about them as well. Parking, maybe some midterm uses, could be a visitor information center, chamber, a business incubator, art studio, a police substation, and our human services outreach. And maybe some short-term uses during our government remodel. We're in some tight quarters, possibly some, some offices could be in there. And then also David Hose plans on using it for the mural. So I included these in previous presentations that I gave to EDAB and Planning Commission. And one of their concerns was that we're adding courts in here, and so courts are going to stay forever. And so I kind of, these slides we'll go through pretty quickly. The US Bank Building is 3,300 square feet. And the one next door is 1,300 square feet. And I showed them that, you know, this is what the new city hall will look like. And the courts have over, about 4,000 square feet. So clearly, they would want to use this space and not stay in the downtown forever. So as I mentioned, the proposal is for conditional uses in this area. And those are uses that have to go through a deeper dive and look to make sure they're not negatively impacting the neighborhood. And it just gives the public a greater opportunity to provide input on those uses in the area. And so they're a type three permit. And they, there's public notice. They go out to the neighbors. There's a public hearing in front of a hearing examiner. The staff writes the decision. Well, staff writes recommendations to the public, the hearing examiner, and then he writes the decision. And then it does get recorded against the property when it's all done. We don't need to go over all of the items, but I did include that what we look for when a conditional use permit application comes in, we just need to make sure it's consistent with the surrounding area and that it's really going to fit in in the area. I also added, I know there's a lot of questions over membership organizations. This is the definition that's in our code right now. And so I just want to be really clear that it's, it's, can be established, it's pretty broad. Establishments that organize and promote religious activities, support various causes through grant making, advocate various social and political causes, and promote and defend the interests of their members. Like I mentioned, this went to the Economic Development Advisory Board. It went to the Downtown Subcommittee as well. EDAB made a recommendation, actually, in our original proposal to them, police stations were not included. And they made a recommendation to move forward with police stations included to Planning Commission. to Planning Commission. We held a public hearing at Planning Commission, and they also agreed to add police stations in there, and they have now made a recommendation to City Council. So tonight, I am just here to discuss and see what, see if you have any questions on this.
Attorney Counsel, are there any questions, or any suggested revisions, that sort of thing? All right, you got a thumbs up from one, you got a hand up from another. Kyle, is that your flag? All right, I'll, I'll recognize Kyle's flagless flag, and then Tammy's.
The membership thing, I just wanna make sure it doesn't mean martial arts, doesn't mean a gym, doesn't mean any of those things.
It, um,
Or doesn't?
No, that is indoor recreation.
Perfect, that's, that's all I had?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. Appreciate it, Amy. Quick question, and I should know this, but I don't, so I'm gonna ask you, because you're the expert. Our new historic downtown signs, are they bordering the promenade?
They are not specifically bordering the promenade.
Did we think about that? I'm trying to remember, I think I was part of that.
I was not on that committee, but they are about a block, maybe a block in on each side. Yes, they are within the historic area, they're not outside of it.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Fisher? It's like you're, it's like you're a drummer over there.
Start belting out a song. Yeah, right? Sing some more music. Gosh darn, did I write it down? Well, you're gonna have to hold.
If, unless somebody else, we're just waiting on you. So, so here's the thing, if you can't find it right now, you can always reach out to us, and also, this will be coming back on June 11th, one week from today, for public hearing and first reading. Maybe you need to knock your can again?
It was the professional buildings downtown. Does that mean, like, offices? Because I know, did we do something downtown with, I just saw it when I was going through the permitted uses?
The government administration buildings?
No, it was just the downtown stuff. I'm on page 38 of just the land use downtown commercial zoning. I don't know if we wanna talk about that right now, though. You can tell me to not talk about it.
Is it within the scope of the?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's in our agenda.
Is it within the scope of the ordinance for making changes?
I don't, I don't know, that's why I brought it up.
I do not believe so.
Okay. We'll move on then.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
If you'd like, we can always discuss it.
Yeah, I'll bring it up later on.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions? It'll only work if you, if you play a little song on your aluminum pan. Kinda reminded me of Virginia, it was great. All right, seeing no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that's item 7.2, potential new revenue discussion with Director Hassert. Clap twice, I'm sorry. At some point, someone's not gonna understand that, and I'll know.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. For the Members of the Finance Committee meeting, this is kind of going to be a repeat for you, there were a little bit of detail clarifications that were included into the memo, so if you were to compare the two from the Finance Committee, there are some changes, but the substance is still the same. So what we wanted to talk about tonight is various revenue options that are available to the Council as we start to think about the next biennium budget. Back on, when we did, April 30th, when we did the review of the strategy, over the next few years, there was a lot of discussion about possible expansion of what we do in parks, be it programs, some operations and maintenance, things of that nature. And then there's also a lot of stuff that we've been doing in the Police Department with regards to preventative policing that I know has, you know, Council seems to endorse that are right now on a temporary basis. And so in order to be able to fund those priorities for Council, one of the realistic conversations we have to have is how to, where does, where does the funding come from? So that's part of why we started with the Finance Committee and talked about what's still available on the table as far as new revenues go. So with your indulgence, I'm just gonna go through the memo that was included as an attachment to the Agenda Bill, and one of the first things that was listed, and we did kind of reorder the listing a little bit as to what might be something that can be more immediate for Council compared to other options. One caveat, and I think that we did mention this in the Agenda Bill itself, is just because the revenue option is listed in here, does not necessarily mean it has an endorsement from the mayor or staff, it's just trying to be comprehensive about what is out there. So, our local business owner had the same reaction that I always have to one of them every time it comes up, but in, in fairness, I just kind of wanted to point that out, so. So with that, the first item that's listed in the memo is your bank capacity. Now, I know that there's been times that people get a little bit confused when we talk about bank capacity, this is not money that's been collected and then stuck in a bank. What it is, it's, it's an authority that you guys have council-matically, which means you don't have to go and ask for a vote to collect it. By statute, cities can increase their property collections every year up to 1% or the implicit price deflator, because we are over 10,000 in population, whichever one is lower. Over the last few years, the 1% has been the lower amount. You don't have to take that authority if you don't want to, but if you don't take it, it doesn't mean it goes away, you just happen to bank the ability to take that at a later date. So over the years, because the city does, traditionally does not take the 1% that they're allowed, that authority has been banked. The property, or the assessors at the county track how much that is every year, and it tends to build up over time, not just because of the 1%, because 1% against 4 million in property taxes is really only 40,000 a year, but it's also the ripple effect on all the new construction that's been going on in town, that's part of why we've been able to see it build up. In the seven, in almost seven and a half years that I have been here, we have recommended, and Council has used its bank capacity for a couple of different years, 2017 and again in 2019, and quite frankly, we used a little bit, a little of it in this last biennium budget. So we are down to, we still have 121,000, thereabouts, in bank capacity that's available to Council to use, and if you were to choose to use it, what that means is that you would be taking more than 1% in the next year, but you don't have to ask for a vote for that, because that's the 1% you didn't take over the last few years. So hopefully that didn't confuse things more. One of the other things, too, that's in the memo, and I tried to do, although iCompass isn't great about tables, in the Fiscal Impact Section of the Agenda Bill, but I tried to lay out what that meant in real dollars for us. Assuming that our assessed value does not change between 24 and 25, and we know that's not realistic, between 23 and 24, a lot of jurisdictions in Snohomish County, their assessed values actually went down. Our state, ours had a little tick, less than 1% tick up over this last year, so that's part of why our rate per thousand stayed about the same between the two years. Our assessed value is a little over $4.6 billion. Assuming that doesn't change, assuming there is no new construction added to the rules, if we were to use all of our banked capacity, that would add another just under 3 cents per thousand onto a tax bill here in Monroe. What that means is about, and I wanna say, if I go back to, that's what I was trying to get to before I came up here, I think it's $1.29 per month, thank you, yes, $1.29 per month to the average household in Monroe. Snohomish County says that the average value of a house in Monroe for 2024 is $591,500. That's actually a decrease from what the average was in 2023, at over 600,000, still a lot of money. So if you were to apply that 2.6 cents per thousand to that, that worked out to be the $1.29 per month addition that we are not collecting, but we could if we wanted to help fund some of your priorities. That's the easiest one for you guys to do, if you wanna be able to enact it and take that, you include that in the property tax ordinance that's adopted every November. We certify that with the county, by statute, we have to certify that yearly, even though we do a biannual budget, and that has to be done before the end of November, and then the county takes that into account, then when they start collecting property taxes beginning January 1 of the next year. Any questions on banked capacity?
Questions?
The next one, and this does require a vote, if the Council were to want to pursue this, is what's called a property tax levy lid lift. So again, in the state of Washington, statute dictates the maximum, the cap, that we could collect per thousand on property within the city. That, it runs about $3.60 per thousand. That assumes you are a true full-service city, that you do your own fire department, you do your own library. We actually here, back, I don't know what year you guys did it, predates when I came here, the city voted to be annexed into a fire district, the fire district has since annexed other jurisdictions, so they've gone from being called Fire District 3 to Fire District 7 to now Snohomish Regional Fire. When you, when the city voted to annex, part of what they were voting is to give them authority to collect their own taxes to pay for their operations. Statute allows them to go up to $1.50 in tax authority, but in order to keep properties within Monroe from getting double-dipped in a way, that $1.50 comes off of our maximum authority of $3.60. So that would then take us down to $2.10 as our maximum that we could collect. Library district's the same thing, we can choose to either do our own library, or if we, or we can choose the vote to be annexed into a library district, and somewhere in Monroe's history, they have done that, because we are part of the, or not the Vancouver, sorry, but the Snohomish Regional Library District. They, too, then get 50 cents per thousand in authority that goes with them, they're their own government, they collect their own taxes, pay for their own operations that way. So as you can see in the memo that was attached to the Agenda Bill, it keeps decreasing than what our maximum can be. So our maximum at this point is $1.60 per thousand that we could collect on property within the city. As we were talking about in a bank, the bank capacity section, our rate per thousand that we are collecting as of 2024 is a little over 86 cents per thousand. So that leaves another 74 cents that's available on the table if the voters in Monroe choose to allow us to use it. Again, based on assessed value within the city, every 10 cents we may ask for can get us, and sorry, I keep switching between, no, that's okay, I've got it in front of me here, too. Every 10 cents gets us about 463, 464,000 a year. So you can see that that can be a powerful way to bring in revenue into the city to be able to pay for our priorities. The thing about the property tax and the levy lid lift is that that is the most flexible revenue you can bring in, and then it's really based on Council, how you wanna budget it as to how it gets spent. Now, I had to catch myself and, and stop myself from saying ongoing revenue, because ongoing is dependent on how you do the levy lid lift. Just like any vote, how you write up the vote and the ask to your voters determines whether this is going to be a one-time bump. If it's a one-time temporary levy lid lift, you get the bump, if it's approved, you get the bump for one year only, and then you go back to what you were as if you didn't do the levy lid lift, because you did it as a temporary. If you do what's called a one-year permanent, you get the bump that first year, but then that becomes, that bumped up amount becomes your new base against which you can raise 1% going forward. That becomes an ongoing permanent revenue source for you. So if you were to implement a new program or want to turn a program such as Parks Department and the need for their maintenance workers, if you wanted to add maintenance workers and you wanted to be able to continue to fund that going forward, then the recommendation would be to do a one-time permanent levy lid lift, and target how much you would need to ask for for that. You know, another program that we have that, that's been talked about, too, is the CSO program in, in the Police Department. We have one permanent FTE as a CSO, we've added a second temporary CSO, but the question is, how do you pay for that if you wanna turn that into a permanent program and have two FTEs doing that? So again, doing a one-year permanent levy lid lift would be an option to be able to do that. I mentioned every 10 cents brings in about $464,000 a year for the city. If we were to do 22 cents, and we'll talk about a little bit more how we got to 22 cents on June 18th, but 22 cents would bring us in just over a million dollars that would pay for the expansion in parks as well as making the CSO program permanent, and 22 cents per thousand on the average price of a home in Monroe, the 591,000 and change home, would add $10.84 a month based on today's assessed values. Now, the other nice thing about asking for a levy lid lift is state law now also allows that you can, as long as you include it in the title of the vote that you put in front of your, your constituents, exclude seniors and disabled low-income from having to pay for the lid lift portion of the property tax. So something to keep in mind as you're thinking about impacts to your property owners with that one. There's also a write-up in the, the memo about multi-year levy lid lifts, both permanent and temporary, usually most, if you, if the city's gonna do it, they do the single-year permanent levy lid lift. Quite frankly, fire departments do it, that's how they get back to their $1.50 every couple of years, so I could, you know, I'm not gonna go into the details on those unless, Mr. Mayor, someone has questions on that. Any questions on that particular portion?
Any questions, Council?
Great. So the next one we have listed in here, then, is utility taxes. For those of you that have been around a little bit, you've seen me do my little road show with all the funds laid out, talking about how money can move back and forth between funds, between utilities and the general fund, and back when we did that, we used to collect 10, we still collect 10% utility tax on water utility, but we did not collect utility taxes back then on sewer. We have since implemented the sewer utility tax, at that same time, we actually decreased sewer rates in that year, and we also increased the senior low-income discount from 30% in that year, and we also increased the senior low-income discount from thirty percent to forty percent for utility bills here in the city of Monroe. Traditionally, among utilities, that discount is thirty percent. We are at forty percent here because we were conscious of not wanting to have the fact that we were going to start taxing our own utility have any real impact to our utility rate payers. And if any of you want to reach out to me offline and talk about how that was, we were able to work that among the utilities, would be happy to do so, but that's kind of outside the scope of tonight's discussion. But the reason that I bring that up is that we still have one more utility that we are not collecting utility taxes on. So we're not necessarily treating all three utilities equitably. Stormwater utility still does not pay a tax to the general fund. If we were to implement the same ten percent utility on our stormwater, that could realize about three hundred thousand a year. Now, I will say traditionally, because of the nexus between stormwater and street operations, stormwater utility taxes traditionally go to the street fund. Street operations and maintenance does need some help with funding. What's nice about that is usually you either look to a stormwater utility tax for that, or you start looking at the general fund for that. So even if the money went to the streets, it's still in the long run helps relieve a potential burden that could come up on the general fund. If you were to choose to implement, oh, and if I may back up for a minute, on the levy lid lift, regardless of what time of year you were to have the vote, and if the vote were successful, and it only needs fifty percent to pass, the earliest that we would start collecting it would be the beginning of the next calendar year. So for example, if we were to run the vote on this November's election, we could certify it then before we, you know, with our property tax ordinance at the end of November to the county, we'd be able to start collecting it come January one, two thousand twenty-five. If we did the vote in two thousand twenty-five, the earliest we'd be able to start realizing that increased property tax would be January one, two thousand twenty-six. So there's a timing issue there, if that is an option that the council would want to pursue. With utility taxes, if it's our own internal utility, you could adopt the ordinance today. There is a ninety-day waiting period before it can go into effect because it is subject to referendum. But, and with, as with all utilities, if you're going to impose a utility tax, there's usually a ninety-day waiting period. The reason I say that is we are currently at the maximum that we can collect on utilities being provided by outside companies. And yes, steam is actually considered a utility in the statutes. The mayor and I were chatting about that the other day. We don't have a steam utility here in town, so it's kind of a moot point, but the statute calls it out, so we included that in the memo. But natural gas, electric, those types of utilities, we do collect the six percent maximum that we are allowed. You can actually go over six percent on those utilities, but it would require a vote. If we were to take that out to a vote, say we increased one of those by a percent, and there's a table in the memo that can show what that might realize, then once the vote is certified, you'd have to pass the ordinance, there would be a ninety-day waiting period before it could go into effect because the utilities are allowed, that they have to go in front of the utility commission if they're ever, if they adjust their rates to justify why they're adjusting their rates. And so they're given that ninety days to be able to do that. So that's utility taxes. Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions?
Is there any utility to ask me if there are any questions?
So some of the not as popular, well, before I go there, and this is one that was in my memo last time, and I have to give apologies to the Finance Committee. I think I got so passionate into my presentation, I forgot to mention that for transportation benefit districts, we are at point two percent sales tax on the TBD. We just renewed for another ten years that will begin January one, two thousand twenty-five. However, with the changes that were made at the state legislature recently, we can actually go up another point one percent in sales tax through council action. You don't have to go out for a vote for that. It is still restricted to the same uses that you have with the other point two percent, has to be for your transportation system. But it is something that is in your back pocket, so as we start looking at our transportation plans, especially our six-year and our twenty-year capital facilities plan, I know we've got some projects coming on board that we're going to have to think about how to fund those. This is something that the council could institute, does not require a vote of the people to do it, and we could use it then to pay for debt service for our transportation projects. So just something I wanted you guys to be aware of, this was not a tool that we had a couple of years ago, so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
I was waiting till you got to this one because the other thing I thought you'd point out too is that this obviously is a tax that is shared beyond just the constituents within the city of Monroe. So this one for me always makes a lot of sense if we're going to look for levers because a lot of people use our services and roads and all that kind of stuff, and this would make it so the burden wouldn't just be on the citizens of Monroe.
Any other questions at this time?
All right, the next one we have on here, and I'll wait for the boo and hisses on this one. I'll probably join you, is business and occupation taxes. There are a number of cities in the state of Washington that collects business and occupation taxes. It is something that the city could choose to implement. It is a very unpopular tax because it's based on gross receipts. It is not based on net income. You could lose money in your business and still owe this tax. I have worked in what I call my former lives where we've had a BNO tax. It is not a fun program to have to administer either. I did include in your memo kind of the write-up that Municipal Research has about the pros and cons, and even they have a lot more cons than pros on this one. But again, we just want you to be aware it is out there. We do not have a good estimate of what this could realize because again, there's a lot of different factors involved with that, and quite frankly, business income, returns, all of that, that's not public record anyhow, so it's not really easy to get a aggregate feel of what's coming in from a business standpoint here in Monroe itself. So the other challenge with business and occupation taxes, a lot of times, is that you could have the storefront, the brick and mortar here in town, but they might be doing their business over in Snohomish or an incorporated county, and then where does that get apportioned? I know that was a lot of issue with, between Seattle, the cities of Seattle and Tacoma a couple of decades ago, which then quite frankly led to the model BNO tax ordinance. So there's a lot of regulations surrounding a BNO tax as well if the city were to want to implement it. I believe I have in the memo, I think it's forty-nine cities in the state of Washington who currently do collect BNO taxes. And if memory serves, we have like two hundred and eighty-something cities in the state, so that kind of tells you where cities kind of stand on this one, so. The next one that we wanted to bring up was cannabis. We've had a lot of discussion lately about cannabis. I put a little bit of history in the memo with regards to how we got here. There's also a chart in here that I kind of picked up from MRSC again about what what triggers we'd have to have in place in order to be able to collect this particular revenue stream. This is a revenue stream that statute doesn't necessarily say how we can and cannot spend it, but traditionally it tends to be spent on criminal justice. With that, what is interesting about cannabis, while if you have a retail store in town and there's some sales tax associated with it, unlike the rest of the sales tax here in town, that all gets collected by the state, and then the state apportions it on a per capita basis based on whether you allow retail sales or not. So it isn't what gets sold in Monroe stays in Monroe. So that makes it difficult to estimate how much we might be able to realize from this. In the meantime, between writing this memo and doing this presentation at the Finance Human Resources Committee and then doing it tonight, there was an article that I saw in Como News that was talking about the city of Linwood. It's starting to have discussions again about maybe raising their moratorium. And what was helpful about that, that you got to love about the fourth estate, is that they will file public records requests with cities that are collecting cannabis tax. And they had some numbers in that article talking about how much Everett has received back in two thousand twenty-three and how much Seattle has received back in two thousand twenty-three. So again, this is just a broad estimate, but I took those numbers against what the populations of those two cities were. And what I came up with was that Everett received around two dollars and fifty cents per capita in cannabis revenue. Seattle was two forty-four, so it's within the range. So I used the lower amount just to be conservative. Obviously, times that against our population, and really what we're talking about is a little over fifty thousand dollars a year. Again, doesn't matter how well a retail business here in town might do, it all gets apportioned based per capita. So I think it was only fair, that was the best information I had to be able to make an estimate. Again, it is just an estimate. I'm not saying whether we should or shouldn't do that, but based on what we saw that Seattle's getting, based on what Everett's getting, I think that fifty thousand, maybe fifty-one, fifty-two thousand, quite frankly, would be maybe a little high on an estimate because the other side of it too is the more cities it's, oh God. Well, okay. I stepped into that one. I think the more cities that start to allow it, it's going to dilute how much we can get per capita. So I think our best bets would be in the forty thousand range, quite frankly, so.
Councilmember Campbell?
Just as a reminder, that compared to the point zero one percent, if we were to raise that, the net on that was?
Eight hundred, over eight hundred thousand.
I just wanted on the record.
Thank you.
The next one that was listed on here because the Finance HR Committee asked us to include it on the memo was traffic safety cameras. Again, tough to estimate how much because usually traffic safety cameras are more about safety and changing behavior than it is about bringing in fines and revenue. I also didn't want to do too much on that because we are going to be coming back in front of council on June eighteenth to dive a little bit deeper on that particular subject, so.
Councilmember Campbell?
I'm a little disappointed on this one because I think the ask was too to also to at least, because we already had this in the budget before. So to at least look what we had previously would be, that would benefit. So when we bring this back, I would like to at least see what we, we used to operationalize it into the budget. We reviewed it in Finance Committee, so I know we have the data.
Anyhow, I think that is the end of my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? All right. Do you have anything, thank you very much, Director?
Comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know how I missed that. Councilmember Walker.
That was an awesome way to present it. The write-ups were super helpful when it comes to visualizing the actual amounts, so thanks to all the calculating that went into, yeah.
Lot of help. I got to give Ms. Knight a lot of credit on that too. She pushes me all the time. There are times that I'm just really reluctant to give an estimate because who knows where it's going to go, and she just pushes me and pushes me and pushes me, and so we get there, so.
Thank you.
In a good way.
And just to put things into like a framework, we talked about priorities a few weeks ago. We're now talking about ways of funding different priorities. One of the things that I'm going to be tasked with is to give direction to council staff here in the next couple of weeks as to what kind of budget is that we're going to be putting together. And so that's why all of this is timely right now, so if you have any concerns or thoughts about any of these, it'll be helpful for me to know. We will be coming back for more discussion, you say next week?
I saw it on the extended agenda for the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth, so it'll be helpful for me to hear what your thoughts are in these areas because that'll inform the directions that I give to council. And obviously, some of these options that are on here are dependent upon like a levy lid lift, if that's a direction that council was interested in. That is dependent upon a vote that will occur after I put together a budget. And it would be my intent to put together a budget, obviously, that's balanced, but if you were to go that way, to have an amendment ready to go so that if you, if it did go forward in November, it did get adopted, you would then be able to adopt an ordinance a little bit later than we currently have scheduled after the vote gets certified to incorporate that into an amendment to the mayor's proposed budget. So there is a, there is a framework and a schedule that we're working with. And again, we'll have more conversation on the eighteenth. Do you have any questions that come up? I know this stuff gets really technical. You can certainly reach out to staff. Just keep me and Deborah in the loop because we, it's important for us to understand what sort of questions are being asked. That helps us identify that, oh, we need to focus on this at the next meeting, that kind of thing. If you've got any thoughts for me that you want to talk with me about, feel free to do that over the next couple of weeks. And so I see Councilmember Gammel's flag. Did somebody else have their flag up? Okay, Councilmember Beaumont and Councilmember Gammel.
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with Councilmember Walker. Great report, very easy to understand, and thank you. Couple of things I just wanted to state for the record, the BNO tax, I don't think anyone up here is rah-rah, let's do that. I just feel that we are challenged already to attract businesses to Monroe, and that would absolutely not help. And these business owners are already taxed by the state for BNO. So to add that on top, forty-nine out of two hundred and eighty-one cities in the state, that seventeen percent are doing this, so not a whole lot of them are doing it. And I just think that that would really not help us with what we're trying to do in getting, attracting great businesses into town, so, thank you.
Thank you. And the thing about the BNO tax, there are cities that, like I was a planner in Redmond in nineteen ninety-nine. Redmond, the dominant industry there was Microsoft. Microsoft didn't make anything that they sold out of Redmond, so they had all sorts of costs associated with all of these people coming to town. And they didn't have at that point in time Redmond Town Center that generated some sales tax revenue. So I understand why that might be used by maybe not all of those forty-nine cities, but maybe, maybe a few of them. Just having been in a, been in a, in a city where you have these professionals coming in, typing on their computers all day and then leaving, but not generating any sort of revenue for the city, so I know that that was something that made sense there. Yeah, we used to, that was before sales tax sourcing where the delivery, like it gets delivered here, that's where the sales tax occurs. Back then, I think the rumor was that they did all of their software sales out of Bothell, so Bothell would be getting the value from the work done in Redmond, and so this was the way that Redmond was trying to get the revenue. With that said though, in addition to BNO tax, we would not bring forward the, those things that haven't been decided, like the whole conversation on cannabis. I wouldn't plan on that being in there because that, that process could take longer. And the same thing with the Speed Zone cameras, that's something else that I would probably not factor in. Certainly not right now because there's still a potential conversation for the council to have, so. And of course, if the council did decide to do something that became effective more quickly, again, I'd fold that into an amendment to the executive, the executive if you like that, into the mayor's recommended budget, so. All right, anything else, Councilmember Beaumont? Thank you, Councilmember Gammel.
I know, I remembered, sorry, I didn't stop it earlier, on the stormwater utility tax. Because obviously it's in there that the average household cannot be calculated because it'd be dependent on the overall stormwater utility needs. Can you explain that, what that means for everybody? Because when you read ten percent, people automatically think it's a ten percent increase to the consumer.
So we're actually starting a comprehensive rate analysis on the three utilities. We're working with an outside consultant on that, and it dovetailed nicely with the update to the comp plan as well. And so what we mean by that is the rates tend to be set on what's needed to And so what we mean by that is the rates tend to be set on what's needed to do the day-to-day operations of the utility, and then what a targeted amount for a sweep towards capital, and then whatever the planned debt service we may have over the next couple of years. So capital factors into what we need for a rate for our stormwater fee, operations and maintenance, the number of workers that we have, how much street sweeping we do, how much we stay up to date on the catch basin cleanings, I could go on and on. Jake is here as well, he could probably, he could definitely talk about that with more authority than I can. All of that gets factored into cost of doing business, as is any taxes that we would have to pay. So just because there might be imposed a ten percent utility tax to pay the general fund does not mean it would necessarily equate to a ten percent rate increase, because the cost of doing business in other areas may affect that. Doesn't necessarily mean there would be no increase, I want to be totally upfront about that. But it could, yeah. There's a lot of factors that would have to be looked at on that.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts from the council? All right, again, we'll be working on this again on the eighteenth. And in the meantime, if you've got any questions, please reach out to me and staff. All right. Do we have anything for those evening? If the answer is no, I'm not going to joke about there being a long executive session or anything. I'm ready to go. It's been a pleasure having everybody here this evening, and have a great rest of, rest of your week, and we are adjourned.